...of Education to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands on nation. Please remain standing for the Star Spangled Banner. Thank you to the Swift Pep Band for that. Mindy?
Mr. Nardella? Here. Mr. Dintz?
Here.
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 Mr. Naradella?
Here.
Mr. Dintz?
Here.
Mr. Rossini?
Here.
Thank you, Mindy.
Moving on to Agenda Item D, Board of Education Regular Meeting Minute Approval. All members of the Board of Education should have received their minutes from the February 11th Board of Education meeting in their Friday packet. Are there any questions or concerns in regards to the minutes? We have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Board approve of the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting from February 11th, 2015 as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Naradella. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Rinaldi. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
So moved. Moving on to Agenda E, Award Recognition. The Watertown Board of Education would like to congratulate the Swift Middle School Pep Band for their hard work. These 7th and 8th grade students go above and beyond the normal band requirements, preparing stadium chairs and short band arrangements for several sporting events under the direction of their band teacher, Ms. Becky Borbus. Tonight, the Board honors all of you for your hard work, your talent, and your dedication to bring beautiful music to our school district. We'd like to honor you with a presentation of a certificate from the Board of Ed. As your name is called, please come up and see Mrs. Borbus for your certificate, and then you can make the rounds.
Yes. But we just want to be clear, because there are so many of you tonight, and we're so happy that you were all able to come. Ms. Borbus is going to call the names. You're going to come there. Sorry, this is the teacher in me with the specific directions. Then you'll circle. Just keep coming, circle around here, and when we're done, we'll pause for a minute so that we can take a picture with all of you. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Borbus.
Don't drop your instrument.
And we're going to hold our applause until the end.
The most important thing tonight, right before getting this, is do not wreck your instrument, as Shelby's has already got tape on it. Talen Almazian. Jessica Beverly. Bethany Brown is at basketball.
You want to shake your hand.
This way, sweetie. You're doing great. You're doing great.
My directions weren't as specific as I thought.
It is tough to be first.
We are so proud of you.
Yay, Talen, for going first. Yes. Thank you. Eliza Keabeyab. It's all good.
Congratulations.
TJ Charkowski. Shelby Childs. Maliki Croak. Kaylee DiBianco. Carly and Katerina, I can't remember which one came. Carly was homesick, so Katerina. Sorry, they're twins. Yes, that's yours. Aubrey Musso. Kyle Robinson. Please leave the tuba there. No, okay. Come on, Timmy. You can carry it. That's right. You are awesome, my man. Watch that one. Rachel Shirk. Did I say it right, Steph? Thank goodness I don't have Mrs. Lur's job where I have to say all your names in June. Julius Bagnaletti. Sarah Teta. Caitlin Tran. Taryn White. You know, this group stands out on a Friday night football game in October or November in the freezing cold to root for a team that they're not even of the school yet, which is phenomenal. And they give up a weekend in January every year to come up here and play, and we have such a great time and to play at our pep rally at Swift. And they're just such a fun group, and we have to do all this extra music outside of what we normally have to do. So they work so hard, and I'm just so proud of them. Thank you so much.
Clearly, this is the best part of our job. Thank you very much, and thank you for your beautiful playing.
So if you wanted to take a picture, now would be the time.
We're going to take a brief recess. If everybody could stay right where they are, and we'll take a picture, and then we'll come back.
Okay. Kind of right.
Otherwise, so without the help of these parents and the fantastic organizations that we represent, we wouldn't have this tonight. So I thank you sincerely on behalf of the Board of Ed, and we appreciate all that you do. Moving back to number two. This evening, we would like to recognize the parents of Project Graduation. High school graduation is a time for celebration. Sharing precious moments and memories with classmates, friends, and family brings on a complex mix of emotions. There's excitement and a sense of accomplishment, mixed with nostalgia and a sense of loss. It's an end of a journey. Much has been gained and much will be lost, which makes Graduation Day a turning point for every Watertown student who experiences it. But as bittersweet as that moment is, too often it is marked by tragic loss and severe injury. Many students across the country believe graduation means all bets are off, and the usual rules don't apply, especially when it comes to drinking. Unchaperoned parties and alcohol consumption are common occurrences on graduation night, and despite the well-known dangers, many teens somehow get the idea that drinking and driving isn't so bad when the night is so special, thinking, "I deserve to let loose. It's just one night. Everyone else is doing it." So many of those youthful thoughts turn into the adult realities of one night was all it took to change everything. Each year, automobile accidents take the lives of thousands of teens in the 16 to 19 age group, and a quarter of a million more are sent to the emergency room with serious injuries. Death by car is the number-one mortality risk for adolescents, and alcohol consumption is implicated in one-third of those fatalities. But as bad as those statistics are, things get worse when graduation arrives. The percentage of automobile fatalities that involve alcohol jumps to 40% on graduation night, which is a testament to how drinking and driving spikes when kids are in the mood to party. Recognizing that sober graduation parties are a responsible and effective way to save lives, a group of Watertown and Oakville community members have since 2010 made it their mission to provide such an evening, keeping our graduates safe from 10:00 p.m. in the evening to 5:00 a.m. in the morning, without denying them their need to celebrate the accomplishment of high school graduation. While all school-related functions are absolutely substance-free, what makes Project Graduation unique is the mindset of the students. By signing up to attend Project Graduation, they've made a conscious decision to enjoy their graduation without alcohol or drugs. Project Graduation takes the pressure off of them as opposed to a private party where anything can walk in the door, where peer pressure and poor judgment can easily take over, especially on an emotional night like graduation. Tonight, we honor those who have been raising the funds needed and managing the event for our graduating seniors at Watertown High School, and tonight, in their honor, we welcome Officer Dave McDonald. McDonald.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, everyone. I've been a patrolman with the Watertown Police Department for the last 18 years. Currently, I serve as the school liaison officer working full-time at Swift Middle School and Watertown High School. As a police officer, I have seen firsthand what underage drinking can do to teens and their families. Unfortunately, teens often don't understand the full ramifications of their choices and how life-altering they can be. Offering alternative activities like Project Graduation saves lives. My position in the schools has allowed me to see the real need for fun, safe activities for our students. It takes initiative, dedication, and follow-through by individuals like these recognized here tonight to provide the means to pull off Project Graduation, a huge undertaking. Oftentimes, such efforts go unnoticed. It is the people behind the scenes that should be recognized in this manner. Our police force recognizes your efforts. I'm here representing the Watertown Police Department. I want you to know that every member of our force appreciates all your hard work. We are proud to honor your efforts and want to extend a special thank you for keeping our students safe on the night of their graduation. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, in their honor, I welcome State Representative Eric Berthel.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Good evening, Dr. Carnemola, distinguished members of the Board, faculty, staff, parents, students, and the public. It's really an honor to be back in this hall this evening to speak with all of you, and thank you, Mrs. Crowdy, for the opportunity to do so. I'd like to share a quick little story with you. In 1984, as a junior at Pomperog High School in Southbury, I lost a good friend to the perils of underage drinking and driving. He was the same age as me, just 17-years-old. When the sadness and disbelief of that terrible evening eventually subsided, I personally became one of the co-organizers of one of the first chapters of Students Against Drunk Driving in Connecticut, also known as SAD, of course. We had CB radios. We borrowed our parents' cars, but we came together as a community to do whatever we could to prevent another senseless loss of life and the pain that comes with it. The Pomperog SAD chapter is still active today. Tonight, I'm proud to stand here to recognize and honor with the Board of Education and our entire community, these parents who are essentially doing the same thing we did in Southbury 30-plus years ago, parents who have given freely and selflessly of their time to help prevent a tragedy from occurring in Oakville and Watertown on graduation night. Many of you that have worked on this Project Graduation have not had a senior, a graduate, involved in the event each year or any year. You simply volunteered because you wanted to help your community. I would also like to note that our board chair, Leslie Crowdy, and her husband, Bill, should be among those being honored tonight as well, because you have also participated in this event to make it possible. I thank you all for your tireless efforts in coordinating this event each year and providing our graduates with a safe, fun, and memorable event. Thank you all for giving so willingly of yourselves for the betterment, the concern, and love of our children. Our community is certainly a better place because of each of you. You know, someone once said volunteering is the ultimate exercise in democracy. You vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer, you vote every day about the kind of community you want to live in. Thank you. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce to you our state senator, Rob King. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, and Madam Chair. Thank you for inviting us this evening. I was talking to Tom Lambert about his graduation. I don't think he could stay out till 10 o'clock, let alone start at 10 o'clock. And I wish the Swift, some of the Swift kids were still here, because maybe they can ask Representative Berthel what a CB radio is. I'm not quite sure they know what that one is. But, you know, in all seriousness, Madam Chair, I think about just today's news about Wesleyan University and the problems that just occurred at a party there, and, you know, I talked to constituents all over and about, you know, drunk driving, as well as the drug use that takes place in our state and the overdoses that take place. And for your, the volunteers that are here that you're recognizing tonight, and I know most of them are my Facebook friends, so I'll see you electronically, but I think it's incredible that you do this, and since 2010, I think that's wonderful, and hopefully we can keep it going. Because I think of, you know, myself, similar age to Representative Berthel. I think I'm a little younger. But in those times when we were in high school, I mean, we didn't have those opportunities, those same, you know, things that are offered to kids and exposure to so much that takes place in the year 2015 that we saw back in the 80s, I think it was. I don't want to talk too long about it. But, no, you know, so I think it was, you know, it's very important that these type of projects occur, and what you're doing is incredible, and God bless you. And to the volunteers, thank you very much for doing what you're doing. You know, what we do is made a heck of a lot easier by the communities we represent, so I appreciate you having me here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Kane. And before we call up our honorees for Project Graduation and also take a photo with our senator and our representative and our officer, we received a letter just today from a former student of Watertown High School that I would ask our secretary, Reynard Della, to read.
Absolutely, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you. And this is from, okay, this is from Mr. Adam Kugler, president of the Watertown High School, class of 2013, former student representative for the Board of Ed, and future president of the United States of America.
That's not in his letter.
I added that. So Adam writes as follows. "It is truly my privilege to provide some words of thanks to the folks who spend so much time planning and carrying out Project Graduation at Watertown High School. As I grew up in Watertown, it was difficult to miss all of the Project Graduation lawn signs that were proudly displayed every year. But I have to admit, I was a skeptic, and that's not just because I prefer political lawn signs. I wasn't sure that I would enjoy an event like this when I graduated from high school. As my graduation neared in 2013, I was concerned about whether or not I would enjoy staying up all night in my high school. However, what I found on graduation night was that my skepticism was ill-founded. When I arrived after eating dinner with my family, I was greeted by enthusiastic, caring volunteers who wanted to ensure that I had a wonderful experience. It was clear that these volunteers meticulously planned each detail and worked tirelessly throughout the night. I ended up having a wonderful time, and I cannot thank these fine, dedicated volunteers enough for their efforts on behalf of my fellow classmates and me. I know that volunteers who work to host Project Graduation take part in this important work because they want to provide students with a great experience. But the meaning and benefits of the event go far beyond a good time. It provides students with a safe experience that acts as an important alternative to the unsafe practices that many high school graduates partake in as they celebrate the end of their high school careers. It keeps students from drugs and alcohol, substances that have ended too many young lives. In short, Project Graduation saves student lives. We will never know how many lives the good people who put on this important event have saved through their work, but we do know how grateful we always will be for their time and efforts. Sincerely, Adam Kugler."
Thank you, Mr. Della. And thank you to Adam Kugler for his wonderful words about Project Graduation. I think he expresses the words of most graduates who have attended Project Graduation.
Including myself, 2007. Great event. It was a great event.
Okay. So at this time, I'd like to call forward our Project Graduation heroes, Kara Laflamme. John Sissio.
Thank you.
Camila Sissio.
Good job.
I don't see Robert Gury and Holly Gury, but we'd like to congratulate them as well. Jan Carpino. And Lori Burtwhistle.
Good job. Thank you, Saul.
I'd like to take a brief break if our honorees would come forward with Senator Kane Emma Carpinski.
Thank you. At John Trumbull, students celebrated the 100th day of school on February 17. Kindergartners made something out of 100 items and counted to 100 for the first, counted to 100. First graders decorated shirts with 100 items, and second graders wrote 100 things that they've learned. Second-grade teachers participated in their first math coaching day. At Polk School, auditions for Aladdin were held last Wednesday after school. Wednesday was also Polk Night at Davle's. $500 were raised to fund a free family fun night in April. At Judson School, Dr. Carnemola visited last week and participated in activities with the students. The school leadership team met last week to continue their work on positive behavior interventions and supports. At Swift Middle School, the Swift PTSO will be having a joint meeting with Watertown High School Principal, Mr. Jones, on March 16 at 6:30. Swift 8th grade students will be visiting the high school Tuesday and Wednesday. They will complete a tour and activities created by Link Crew members. 8th grade parent night will take place in the high school auditorium Wednesday night at 6:30. At the high school, AP parent night was held February 18 to inform parents on the exam process. Course selection information was given out to underclassmen. Students have been rehearsing for the Spring Musical Leader of the Pack and have been raising money for the show in late March. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma, very much. And while we're on the subject of school activities, I'd like to wish you well in your continued efforts and rehearsals for the upcoming musical Leader of the Pack.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Moving on to item G, our first round of public participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the Board this evening? Are there any members of the public that would like to address the Board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to item H, Budget Status Report.
Thank you. The members of the Board of Education received Budget Status Update for January 2015 in their packets Friday, February 20. We continue to operate within 1% of budget overall for the 2014-15 school year. I've taken some time and compared each overall line expenditure to where we were at this very point in time last year, as well as our budgeted amounts for this year's overall budget. Some notable items include where we spent less, where we spent more. We've spent less in certified and non-certified salary lines. I guess you can think of that as the biggest bang for our buck, because when you take a small percentage of a very large number, remember, we're not comparing apples to apples as we go down these lines. We spent less in contracted maintenance and repairs. That 430 line that we've been watching so closely throughout the year, so far, at this date and time, we're about $73,000 less than what we spent last year. We've also spent less in textbooks and instructional supplies with our hard-budget freeze. Where I see more expenditures is in professional technical services, pupil transportation, and tuition. Reason for this is this is all related to outplacements that have happened this year. We will see some offset by our excess cost grant when we get to the end of the year. And we've seen more in heat energy. The biggest reason for this is we've prepaid oil. We prepaid oil earlier this year, 46,000 gallons. We prepaid it because it saved us about $1,000 to do that. We have a nice price of $3.15 per gallon. So if you eliminate that from what you're looking at, we're actually, we've spent less in heat energy at the same point in time last year, so I'm fairly happy with that. Currently, what our office is working on is our E-Rate vendors. They are all responding to our Form 470, which is a bid that is facilitated through E-Rate. At our next spring meeting, we're going to be bringing you an outline of all the bids that we've received for E-Rate service, our telecommunications service, and we'll be recommending our choice provider for your approval.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Do any board members have any comments or questions for Mrs. Brown? Mr. Lambert?
Thank you. Ms. Brown, we have a consortium that negotiates the prices, and I know you mentioned the $3.51 a gallon. When does that contract end, and what is your, what is your hope for the new price?
$3.15, $3.15 a gallon, not $3.51. Even better.
Oh, $3.15?
Yep. $3.15. That goes year-to-year, and right now, they are, they, meaning the people that facilitate the consortium, which most school districts belong to across the state, right now, that they're going to meet and determine whether they're going to stay with the price now or if they're going to renegotiate moving forward. So last year, that happened during the month of March, so they'll be meeting next month to decide that.
That's when our new contract, is this for a year, one-year, annual?
Yes, yes, year-to-year.
Now, it's oil and gas?
It's heating oil, diesel, gasoline, not natural.
Gasoline, not natural gas?
Not natural gas.
Okay, how does the natural gas price come in?
It's hard to compare, because that's measured in decuthermes. So it's a, it's a hard comparison, because you can't compare gallons to that. The price on that, after delivery, transportation, is between $6 and $7 per decutherm. Without the transportation, it's right about $2.85 right now. We are now firing on our prepaid oil, so we've stopped with the natural gas.
We're doing that now?
Yep. We are, we are, we're doing that as of the month of February.
That should see a big savings in the next budget status.
Absolutely. We're going to see a big savings, because we have an open PO to spark energy for the natural gas, and so now, we don't have to go against that open PO anymore, so that will be closed. And all of that, that you see expenditures there, all of those encumbered funds, once they close that PO, that comes back into the line. And there won't be anything else going out of the line, because we've prepaid the oil. So as we go through these months, you're going to see that continue to rectify, rectify, rectify. So from what I can see, we're very close to the amount that we have budgeted in heat energy.
Great.
Yes.
Segueing into that, our transportation contract, when does our transportation, student transportation contract end? Is that, is that also?
That's a, that's a five-year contract.
Oh, it's a five-year?
Yeah, we're in the first year. This year is the first year of the five-year contract.
So when we get the big, big jumps in gasoline prices like we did for the last year, I mean, would that affect the transportation contract costs at all?
It's not going to affect the contract cost, because we pay the diesel fuel for the busing separately. Okay? So with the, with the decrease in price, we may see, we should see a change in that next year. We won't see a change in that for this year. Unfortunately, diesel fuel was prepaid. So although we did really well with oil, probably haven't done as well with the diesel fuel.
Can't second-guess it. I mean, you have to do what you have to do, but it, do you, do you think we would see some sort of a savings in the future?
If the gas prices stay where they are now, absolutely, for next year.
Also talking about energy, which affects our, a lot of our budget. Did you ever consider looking into an energy consulting firm to come into our schools and actually get prices by a consultant, to see what they could do to help our efficiency, inspect our energy systems, check, recommend adjustments, improvements, and train our people on how to really respect the energy usage in the school system?
To a certain degree, we've done some of that already. When we were talking about putting the COGEN unit into the, into the pool, some of what they researched here had to do with just that, and that's where we put those simple strategies into place, which, again, over five very big buildings, it's astronomical savings what we've been seeing. So to some degree, we've done that.
These, these companies, these consultants, some of these firms are pretty big. They, they really do a great job, and I know a lot of other school districts, colleges, towns have turned to these people that really do a lot of training in the building, come in and do a great job, and they actually look at the mechanical systems and provide better efficiencies, see if you're using the right equipment, is it tuned properly, are we having a lot of air escaping in the schools and things like that. So, you know, one of these times, I think it might behoove us at least to come in and get, have some people come in and give us a session on it and see what they would think they could do with our, with our district, because I think there's some pretty good significant savings involved. If we ever want to get a price from one of these firms, I think it'd be well worth our time to look into it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Do any other board members have any comments or questions for Mrs. Brown? Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Moving on to agenda item I, Committee Reports. Mr. Reynard Della, Chair of Curriculum and Instruction Committee, do you have anything to report this evening?
Tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Della. I will be reporting for Policy and Labor Committee. The Policy and Labor Committee had a subcommittee meeting this evening at 6:30. Items that were discussed was a review of our homeschooling policy and the correct location for some policies that need to be moved within our policy to make it our policy directory, to make it more user-friendly. In addition to that, we discussed the change in graduation requirement policy that we would have to make if the new program of studies at the high school is approved this evening. Moving on to Mr. Lambert for Facilities and Operations Committee.
No report this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. And Reynard Della, Governance and Community Engagement Committee.
No report tonight, Madam Chair.
Again, back to you, Ray. Any communications, as Secretary?
There are no communications tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We'll move to item K, Superintendent's Recommendations and Report.
Thank you. I'd like to begin with the school calendar recommendation for 2015, 2016. The board members received the draft in your packets.
All board members have the copy?
We began with a committee at Munson House and with some administrators to put this together. We reviewed previous calendars. We reviewed the regional calendar that has been disseminated from the Litchfield County Superintendent's Association, and that is in line with pending legislation to move to regional calendars over the next two years. We are not required in the upcoming school year to go fully to the regional calendar. I want to be clear about that, but there are points that we are already working toward moving in that work for us, and we should be in a better place to move to the regional calendar in two years from now. I won't get too much into that tonight, but just suffice it to say that we still have some contractual issues that will have to be looked into for us to completely adopt what would be the regional calendar, and some of those will be addressed through the contract negotiations that we've been going through. This year, however, if you look at the calendar that was put together, this was put together by a subcommittee, thank you to Ms. Parlato for leading for me, and it was also brought to the WEA, the Watertown Educators Association, so that we could ensure we had union approval. We've made some slight changes, as I'm sure you saw if you reviewed this. The first one being that we are just changing the way we do business in-house and doing professional development days on the first two days, and then convocation on the third day, which would be right before the students come, instead of having convocation on the first day. And the main reason for that is so that we can get back into the buildings, get the PD going, get ready to open, and then have the ceremony of convocation right before we open up the schools, and that kind of lends itself a little bit better to the operation of the district. Our first day of school would then be August 27 for students. That may be a little bit different for the seniors at the high school. We'll cross that bridge when we come to it if we continue to do the freshman orientation on the first day of school, but district-wide, the first day of school will be August 27. The other big change to this calendar is the way that we are handling the half-days for professional development, and you'll notice that our intent was to do those differently. Instead of having them on Wednesdays, which has typically been the way we've done it, we moved them to Fridays. And the main... And the main reasons for that are, one, it doesn't disrupt the week for students and for instruction. Instead of having a half-day on the Wednesdays for professional development, we will have it on Fridays. And in this way, we've gotten the whole week of instruction in. And when they're dismissed early on Friday, the teachers remain behind, as they would anyway, and we do our professional development. That would be easier on the families and the students also. The April vacation, just to point out, that is in line with the regional calendar. That's one of the ways we are already in compliance with the regional calendar. That is a little bit later than we have done it in a year like this one, for example. But that will be the way that it is moving forward. The other thing that you'll see that we added in, and let me just pull this out, you'll see a little bit of difference on the conferences. If you compare it to the prior year, and that is mostly just to make sure that teachers have enough time to do the conferences. There's differences, as you know, between the elementary schools and how many nights they need to have to be able, at a school like John Trumbull, for example, to be able to actually see all of the parents. So, that's a little bit different. But again, we ran that past the union, and that is in line with our contract. We're fine there. One other thing I'd like to point out that is completely new, and that is the late arrival days at Watertown High School. As you know, we will be preparing for our NIASC, our Decennial Accreditation Visit. And instead of having additional early dismissals to give teachers the time to work on the reporting that will need to be done for the NIASC visit, we are doing what is often done in districts and having the teachers still report first thing in the morning, and the students come in late. So, it's really just the opposite. Instead of leaving early for professional development, this will be just at Watertown High School. The students will come in late some of those days. I point out that often, more days than this are allotted for completion of the NIASC in a school year when they're getting ready to come. However, we really are pretty far along. They have been working so much already that we don't need as many late arrival days as may have been necessary. That said, we will obviously reserve the right, as it's getting closer, that if we needed to use some of the afternoon professional development sessions at the high school for NIASC preparations, we would do that. And we would just make that as an in-house decision. But these affect the calendar, the late arrivals. Do you have any questions for me about the calendar?
When's the NIASC visit?
The NIASC visit is next fall. Yeah, I'm, by that, I mean 2016. So, thank you, Janet, for making sure I said the right year. We, that's what I'm saying there. It's not until October 2016, and preparations are well underway at this point.
Do any other board members have questions in regards to the calendar? Mr. Lambert?
I don't have a question. I'm not a fan of calendars. This is about the easiest calendar I've read in my eight years, going on eight years in the board. It has a lot of good information on it, easy to read, easy to follow. I really do like this document. Thank you for putting that together.
Thank you. And thank you again to the committee and Ms. Parlato, who began the process for me. Okay, moving on. Okay. I've queued up the budget just so that if we had some questions, I had it in front of me this evening. Obviously, I don't plan to go through the entire presentation again. I will stand up just in case I need to move between. If anyone wants to ask me questions, I have all of the documents there. So, I'll go to the podium for, here.
The board members have had ample time to review the budget. This is our second meeting discussing the budget, in addition to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee.
I don't have to click. I got Paul. Okay.
I appreciate Dr. Cardemola providing us with another opportunity to either review or ask questions. At this time, do any board members have any questions, comments, concerns, an item that you'd like to review?
What I will say to wrap up the process, certainly you heard quite a bit from me in the last meeting, but I just want to, first of all, thank the many people that were a part of putting this together. Certainly, this has been a tremendous amount of work. I have not done it alone, as I have already said. I want to make sure that tonight, I thank the administrators from all the buildings who worked very hard with me to put this together. My cabinet, Mrs. Brown, Ms. Rockchester, Janet Parlato, Mr. Senacola, the Board of Ed members who have worked with me in committees and a lot back and forth behind the scenes, making sure that we got this right. I'd also like to thank, even though they're not here this evening, I've certainly done so in person already, I'd like to thank Mr. Scannell and Mr. Nardelli, who worked with me very closely on the town side. And part of the reason for that, I took the initiative in working with the town closely because, obviously, my overarching goal was to meet our immediate needs, to make sure that we continue on a trajectory of improvement, as I discussed, with matching our priorities to our expenditures. But that being said, I also had a goal of maintaining an increase that I believed the town would support. And to be able to do that, I felt I needed to work closely with the town. And there were discussions between Mr. Scannell, Mr. Nardelli and I, Mrs. Brown. We worked very closely on the benefits numbers, for example, and just in discussing what this increase would mean overall to our taxpayers. And while I am certainly aware, as a taxpayer myself, that ideally, you hope you have a zero increase in taxes, and I had that in mind as I put that, this budget together, I have to say again that coming with a 2.9% increase was as low as I was able to bring this budget in and still make sure that I met our needs. And as I showed in the previous presentation, you can see how much our fixed costs alone have risen and that our fixed costs alone are well above a 2.9% increase. And we did a tremendous amount of digging and work and reallocation of our current funds to ensure that we put what we needed into this budget and maintained this increase. So, again, I'd just like to thank all of you for working so closely with me. And certainly, if you have any questions for me this evening, please let me know.
Do board members have any questions at this time for Dr. Cardemola?
I don't have a question, but I just want to, I know the budget time is the task. So, I just want to thank all the effort that you did put into it and get it down to that 2.9% increase.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Any of the board members like to ask Dr. Cardemola a question or have any comments at this time? I think that wraps up our.
Thank you. Okay. I, we had a curriculum and instruction meeting before the Board of Education meeting, our last meeting. I keep wanting to say February 9th, but this snow didn't cooperate. I believe we were February 11th. And I presented a program of studies to the Board of Education for a first read. What went home through in your packets, Mr. Jones did a great presentation for us. And I bring it to you again this evening, hoping that we will take an action to approve it. Do you have any questions for me about the program of studies now that you have had more of a chance to look it over?
I have a question, Dr. Cardemola. And I'll try to phrase this in not a statement, but as a question.
Okay.
In regard to the program of studies, which I think will absolutely benefit the students of Watertown, not only in their ability to have a greater selection of courses and greater achievement, but also to bring them and bring Watertown School District into the year 2015. My concern on the program of studies is how able are we to offer those programs within the current schedule at the high school?
As I, I know many are aware, Mr. Jones has been leading a scheduling committee, teachers at the high school. He has also worked closely with Ms. Parlato and me in these endeavors. And a part of the reason, a large part of the reason, was knowing that we were going to have to make these changes to our program of studies to stay aligned with the High School Reform Act and frankly, to make sure that we give our students the choices and the options that they need. And in doing so, we are looking at a change to the high school schedule so that we can address that concern. I cannot say right now exactly what that schedule will look like, not because I want to keep it a secret, but because they have been working on it. Actually, Mr. Jones and I are meeting this Thursday, I believe, with the, the final draft of the overarching master schedule that he has put together with the committee from the high school. And if you don't mind, I'll let him speak a little bit more to that.
Thank you.
Adding a little bit to that, and thank you for letting me speak on that this evening. We started the scheduling committee back in the fall. They first went through school data. The scheduling committee was not just the school leadership team. A lot of times, that just doubles and the school leadership team does it. That was, our goal was to involve more teachers in this process. So, only two department chairs were actually on that. And that was just because they're in smaller departments that kind of made it a necessity for them to be there. But for the most part, these were not department chairs. These were teachers who volunteered their time to be a part of this. It was led by both assistant principals, Mr. Holgreef and Mr. Medick. And they did a phenomenal job of working with the team of teachers to look at where our school's at, where we need to be with the program of studies, and what's going to get us there. They compared other schools of similar demographics and socioeconomic status, all within our district reference group of D. So, when they looked at all of that, they did vote 12 out of 14 that it would be within our best interest to look at potentially changing our schedule. After that, they began to put together some different recommendations, some different ideas, of which we've kind of structured and took into context to try to create a schedule. While they were doing that, I also held town hall meetings with our staff. We had three that were scheduled, and then we had 1,000 days of snow and had to reschedule and reschedule. We did get those three in where we were able to meet. And I'll say it was one of the coolest things I've done with the staff so far here because it really was just an open environment to talk. And so, then I took the feedback I got from that. On top of that, I have a Principals Advisory Committee of students that I meet with bi-weekly, of which one of the main things we've been talking about is the schedule, things like flex, things like the fact that they have a second period class that's 40 minutes while they rest, or 80 minutes, and it throws off their schedule and timing a little bit, just little things that the students were interested in. So, scheduling committee, Principals Advisory Committee, town hall meetings, all of the information has gone into the presentation that I will make and to Ms. Parlato and Dr. Cardemola this Thursday. And once that's done and we have a final schedule, then we can present that to the community.
Thank you. I, and we just speak even a little bit more directly to your question, Mrs. Crowdy. The current block schedule at the high school does not allow for as many choices as we will need to offer. There are only so many periods in the day in a block schedule, and we will not have enough room to add in these credits and these courses unless we change the way the courses progress through a week, both in the number of minutes in the courses and in the progression, the way that they repeat, the labs and science and so on. There's, there's a lot that has to go into us being able to offer this many courses and have students actually be able to sign up for them without being locked into the current block schedule. And that is a, why I began the conversation the way I did, is a large piece of why the Schedule Committee has done the work that it.
Adding on to that, there's, it's an interesting time in Connecticut with the current legislation changing. And you hear of many different schools talking about going to a traditional schedule, going to a hybrid schedule, going to a block schedule. I know we're not the only school even in this area that's talking about it. Just to clarify one thing about our current schedule, while it is what you would call a rotating block, it is not a traditional rotating block schedule. That would imply you have eight classes. We have seven. And that's a big difference. So, we only offer students in a given school year, seven courses that they can take. A block schedule, ideally, if you think about Four Corners, would be eight classes. So, even though we say we have a block, because of the way our schedule looks, we do not have what is really called a block schedule. We have seven courses with a flex period in there that offers different things. Not to say that that's a bad schedule, but again, going back to what Dr. Cardemola said, there are some elements and things that we need to look at in order to get where we need to be.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And I would just like to add.
No, when you're done, I have.
No, go ahead. Is it true that we're going to be doing eight classes next year, though? Eight?
It's a possibility. And again, I want to be able to kind of go over that with Dr. Cardemola with all of our kind of final presentation on Thursday and then have a better kind of understanding of exactly where we're going to go with it.
So, if other schools are doing a block scheduling with eight periods, it is a possibility that we could maybe do it? It's not something that could, is totally off the table?
There's a lot of things that we're looking at. Again, taking all of that into consideration and trying to figure out what would work best in the setting that we have.
Okay.
I would just like to add, just, and then we'll go to Ms. Orsini, that I appreciate your explanation in the process that you've gone through with your staff and your administration team. Because really, in terms of the Board of Education, this isn't really within our, something that we would normally discuss. So, I appreciate you taking the time to answer my question at the, to the extent that you did. I think that's a daily operational concern that usually isn't the concern of ours, but it is definitely, as you've witnessed from PTO meetings, a topic of concern for parents. So, I really appreciate you going into detail on that.
Thank you.
Orsini?
Well, then, that kind of confuses me because I'm just through the chair. I'm just asking the question if you're going to, you've already kind of made the decision to change the curriculum? Is that kind of the understanding?
The program of studies?
Program of studies?
The program of studies, we do have to change moving forward and.
Right, because of the new requirements.
So, how we change the schedule to be able to meet that is still not completely settled.
Understood.
But there will have to be some changes.
Okay.
It's also not a question that should go on much longer. Registration process has begun, and it's not, the question of a schedule is something that won't be lasting much longer.
Right. And that's why I asked Mr. Jones to come Thursday, and we're going to kind of hash out the finalities of it. I, as Mrs. Crowdy said, even though this isn't in the normal board purview, I would think that as moving forward, it would probably be another topic in the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting, show how it's aligned to the new program of studies that you discussed.
As well as the, the training that we will need to provide our staff on any changes that need best practice-type training and things like that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Okay. Under seven, our committee met this evening for Policy and Labor. And you note that it's a, it's a first reading. I want to speak a little bit to the language that is here in the agenda, though, because it's a first reading not of an actual policy. It is a first reading on the advice of the Board of Education Attorney regarding a policy on homeschooling. And so, we had, we discussed that at great length this evening, tonight, in the Policy and Labor Committee. But I want to make sure that all of the board members have a chance to look at that advice that was given to us regarding a policy and to bring back any questions that you may have. Moving on, Emma said a little bit about what I am going to tell you also, as is usually the case. Thank you, Emma. And actually, if you don't mind, I'd like to have a question. Do you know how well the funding is going for the play?
I think we've raised about $500 on a GoFundMe account that we started, and then we have ad sales for the playbill. So, it's going pretty well.
Thank you. I, last week, we were, we had a holiday on Monday. At, on Tuesday, I was at Judson. I actually was able to see the majority of classes there, all of third, all of fifth, and some of fourth. It was a difficult day, again, with the way the sketch, the specials were. I spent all day on Thursday at Polk School. I did get to see all of third, fourth, and fifth grade and a little bit of, again, what we call the specials. I also had the, the privilege of attending a basketball game at Swift Middle School last week. That was very exciting and happened to have Mrs. Crowdy there also, and we won. So, it was an extra exciting game that I.
Have to come back for every game now.
That I had the opportunity to see. Also, last week was a busy week for me in terms of events in the community. I was at a Crime Stoppers Board meeting on Wednesday morning, and a little bit of a shameless plug for the Crime Stoppers, I guess, but they'd be upset with me otherwise if I didn't mention it, that the main fundraiser that we organized, the Crime Stoppers, is their big pasta dinner in April. Believe that is April 19th. Certainly, you can see someone to find out a little bit more about that, but they are very excited. They do a lot of work with our police department and also with our schools. So, it's not entirely a shame. So it's not entirely a shameless plug. They've come in and done quite a bit of work with our middle school and high school students over the years. I was at the Chamber of Commerce meeting for Watertown on Thursday morning. I let them know about the Shamrock Shuffle proceeds, half of which are going to our Swift Middle School student who has been diagnosed with cancer, and a portion going to Mr. Bizano's scholarship. We're very happy to have both of those come to us from the shuffle. Also, I mentioned to the chamber, and I'll mention again here, on March 6th at 6:30 at the Grand Oak Villa, we have a gala for John Trumbull Primary School that the PTO has put together there. I believe it's the first time they're doing it. It's pretty exciting. They're having a silent auction and so on, and actually, they're raising some money for some specific technologies at John Trumbull. I also, you may have seen it in the Republican American today, that did a very nice article about the Bells for Ben activity that we participated in with the senior center. That was a number of our second graders, many of our teachers from John Trumbull was very happy with the turnout of people that we had come from John Trumbull. I know Ms. Mecca had to leave this meeting a little bit ago, but I've expressed my thanks to her. I'm very proud of how our students turned out, and our teachers and parents, and worked with the seniors to participate in the Bells for Ben event. And it was a four-day week, but that sounds like 20 days, but that was the majority of how I spent last week. If you have any questions about any of that, besides where to get the fundraiser tickets, I'll leave that out, or it really will be a shameless plug. And thank you again, again, even though they're all gone. I'm sure they'll see this in the public's access channel. I again want to thank Ms. Borbus and Mrs. Slurs for having the band come this evening. That was wonderful. We were a little bit worried about how to recognize 40 students, but I think we pulled it off, and I'm very happy that they were able to be here with us this evening. Thank you.
Any board members have questions for Dr. Carnemola in regards to her report this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to board chair comments. You're going to hear a lot from me in the coming months in regards to the 2015-2016 proposed budget that Dr. Carnemola had presented to us. We know that in November, this board adopted a district improvement plan that our administration had made its priority. Not once did they take their eye off the ball, and by "they," I mean Dr. Carnemola and her team. Regardless of the obstacle standing in the way of that achievement, they kept on going. Merging the improvement plan into the budget strategy was not an easy task, and there were many things that had to be worked on in order to accomplish even the most minor changes to our budget. Starting with the examined needs of our district, and combining that with the historical information collected from a decade of processes and decisions made by past leaders, and analyzing them as effectively as possible, a budget developed. And it's not easy to present this budget, or to vote in favor of it, when we cut almost a half a million dollars immediately in teaching and learning, included much-needed literacy, numeracy, and English language tutors, and supervisors of math and science. Those are not in our budget. However, it does become easier knowing that the budget process carefully scrutinized the best way to efficiently use our funds, with the ultimate goal of having a maximum impact on student achievement. Recognizing that class size has a direct impact on this, the responsible choice was made to bring an additional K and third-grade teacher, where it will have the greatest impact on self-concept, social skills, and test scores. This budget ensures that every single resource available is being utilized effectively. It focuses on providing a physically and emotionally supportive environment for teaching and learning to take place. This is a budget that communicates with and engages all stakeholders in town, and includes the efficient use and proactive maintenance of all of our beautiful facilities, while cutting as many of the facility projects as we could without being penny wise and dollar foolish. It's a budget where every cost savings possible was analyzed and obtained, where spending is absolutely efficient and subsidized by the ongoing pursuit of grant dollars wherever It continues to fulfill the responsibility of providing education to the Watertown Public School students, special, including special education services, and it also brings our district into 2015 with advancements in safety and technology that will greatly impact our ability to comply with mandated testing, evaluations, and the input of data necessary to maintain both compliance and security. I personally look forward to the meeting on March 19th, where we can present this budget to the town council in full confidence that we have brought a budget forward that is in the best interest of both the students and their taxpayers in Watertown. I hope that you will all join me on that day. Moving forward in the agenda, action items. Consideration to approve the proposed 2015-2016 budget. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2015-2016, as recommended by Dr. Bridgette Carnemola, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Congratulations, Dr. Carnemola, into the entire board.
Thank you.
We have a budget.
Thank you.
Moving on to action item number two, consideration of the approval of the proposed 2015-2016 school calendar. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the proposed 2015-2016 calendar for Watertown Public Schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Moving on to the next action item, consideration of the approval of the proposed 2015-2016 program of studies at Watertown High School. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the proposed program of studies at Watertown High School for the 2015-2016 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Fasensy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Moving on to action item four, consideration of the approval of a child-wearing leave of absence. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the request for a long-term leave of absence for Ms. Julia Culbertson for the 2015-2016 school year without pay for the purpose of child rearing.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Nardella. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Move on to item O in our agenda, I'm sorry, item N. Thank you, Dr. Carnemola. Future agenda items and board member comments. Do any board members have future agenda items they'd like to recommend, or any comments they wish to express at this time?
Mr. Fasensy? Chair, can we get an update on how we're making out with the security grant, as far as vendors and...
Yes, thank you. We will put that on an upcoming agenda to get an update on the security grant. Any other member comments or questions? Or future agenda items?
For you?
Yes.
Dr. Carnemola? Thank you. One other thing I wanted to mention, I'm sure you'll see more about this, but already I have scheduled some meetings in conjunction with the PTOs at the schools, so that I'm able to discuss the budget, do an abbreviated version of the presentation that I did for the Board of Ed, for our parents, community members, faculty members, anyone who wants to come to any of them. We've joined up, so that we have three instead of five. On March 11th, I will be at Polk at 7:00, and that is a combination with the Polk and Judson PTOs have helped me to schedule that. At Swift Middle School, I'll be there March 16th at 6:30, and again, that's the high school and the middle school PTOs who joined up to help me schedule that. And I will be at John Trumbull sooner. I will be at John Trumbull March 4th at 7:00. These are, I did them via the PTOs, but these are public meetings. Anyone who'd like to come, come and watch me do an abbreviated presentation again and answer any questions that our parents or community members may have. And there will be more than these, but for the time being, this is where I'll be in March.
Dr. Carnemola, on that note, I just want to thank you for, and show our appreciation for you scheduling in an organized fashion, three opportunities for the public to come within a month's time, to not only hear the presentation, but to have a sit-down and talk across the table with Dr. Carnemola and some members of the Board of Ed, so that they can hear it for themselves, so that they can ask questions directly to Dr. Carnemola and any of us if they wish, as opposed to talking to their neighbors and hearing things through the grapevine. It's a wonderful opportunity, and we appreciate the extra time and effort that you're putting into that. I know we will also have additional times that are less structured for people to do that, but we appreciate that very much, so thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item O, public participation, our second round. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board this evening? Any members of the public that wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to item P. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the negotiated contract settlement between the Board of Education and the custodial, maintenance, and technical employees. Attending the executive session will be James Gambardella, Don Orsini, Tom Lambert, Janelle Wilk, Vic Fincenzi, Kathy Rinaldi, Leslie Crowdie, Bridgette Carnemola, and myself, Ray Nardella, as well as Joe Brown.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
So moved.
...
We are now back in regular session. Item Q, being in regular session. I'd like to ask for a motion to table the possible action concerning the negotiated contract settlement between the Board of Education and the custodial maintenance and technical employees. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. I move to table agenda item Q two, possible action concerning the negotiated contract settlement between the Board of Education and the custodial maintenance and technical employees for a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Nardella. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tensions? So moved. I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Nardella. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.